The time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for September 1st, 2020 is now in session. First on the agenda is Councilmember Brown will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say thanks for sidewalks on Main Street and pray for smooth roads, but I found a reading from Galatians that I think is more suitable for this evening. "Well, Lord, this meeting has occurred because we want to do good for your kingdom. I pray that we do not grow weary while doing this good thing; for in due season we shall reap if we do not lose heart. I believe that you will guide us in the meeting so that results can be seen days, months, and even years after today. We come expecting to make a mark on this earth that is significant, but we can only do it with your guidance. Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I have one special announcement, council and guests. While seated, it is perfectly fine to remove your mask or while speaking at the podium. But as you approach the dais or depart the chamber, we respectfully ask that you put your face mask back on. First on the agenda is a presentation to recognize the National Payroll Week. All right. This is the City Assurts Proclamation for National Payroll Week. America works because it's working for America. Whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting worker earnings, and withdrawing federal employment taxes. And whereas payroll professionals in Assurts, Texas play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Assurts, Texas, carrying out such diverse tasks by paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding reporting and deposits. And whereas payroll departments collectively spend more than $2.4 trillion annually complying with federal and state wages and tax laws. And whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-consolidated parents and making sure that they comply with their child support mandates. And whereas payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding system. And whereas payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at a less cost to both government and businesses. And whereas the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed as National Payroll Week, I hereby give additional support to the efforts of the people who work in Assurts, Texas, and the payroll professionals by proclaiming the first full week of September Payroll Week for this city, Assurts, Texas. Ms. Amanderas, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Hello. I just want to say thank you for your shuttle and I appreciate your time for this. Thank you.
Just want to go ahead and stand by. Just some additional comments. Twenty-six pay periods. Wow, you know, there's a lot of challenges that need to be made when you're making payroll adjustments, taxes, 401Ks, TMRS, change in number of dependents, changes in beneficiaries. All this is unnoticed until it doesn't, until something happens, but we appreciate your hard work. We have Parks and Recreation. Jared, I guess you're up.
My name is Jared Motney. I'm your Parks Manager, Council, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Brown. My pleasure to introduce you, Tim Miles. He hails from Corpus Christi. He's a certified beach bum who enjoys saltwater fishing, cooking, and spending time with his family. He's been married for 12 years and has a son in the sixth grade. His favorite season would be Christmas. He went to a school called Le Cordon Bleu Culinary Academy in Austin. He has several years of general contracting experience and heavy equipment experience and 10 years' experience as an executive chef. He has jumped in and done a lot of good work with us.
Welcome aboard. The mic's all yours.
Thank you. Yeah, my wife and I moved down to the San Antonio area about 10 years ago. Kid hadn't started school yet. We started doing research, school districts and things of that nature. We liked what we saw from the Assurts School District. That's what brought us here, but we love this community. I mean, and for me, it was a big change from being an executive chef over to Parks and Rec, but I'll tell you what, my stress levels since I've been here have gone way down. So 15 years in the kitchen, just got a little burned out, needed something different, and I don't think I could have found a better fit. Now I'm doing something where I get to give back to the, put back into our community. So that's pretty important to me because I can't beat the community fill in Assurts. So that's about all I have.
Well, welcome. Welcome aboard. You went from the heat to a different type of heat, right?
That's exactly it. We're hoping, we're hoping it's gonna let off of us a little bit very soon.
It will.
Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Certainly my pleasure to be able to introduce Tammy Glasgow to you. And this is a great program that Tammy comes to us with. It's actually through ICMA, International City Managers Association. It's called the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship. And this is a relatively new program, and it's intended to give veterans a chance to be exposed to local government near the end of their career. So she's actually still on active duty in the Army, and the DOD is paying her salary, but she gets to come and work with us for 16 weeks. So it's a great program. I think a great opportunity for her. It's great to have her. And so we're really excited about being able to participate in a program like this. Of course, we, we want to support our veterans, and this is a great way to do that. Tammy will retire from the Army on the 1st of February in 2021 with 22 years. She is an active-duty lieutenant colonel, and she serves in the Medical Service Corps with the Army. She's married to Mutoa Glasgow, her husband, of 22 years, and they're the proud parents of Kendall, their son, and he is senior at Clements High School. And they have lived in Assurts since 2016. So I think it's wonderful, not only do we support a veteran, but a resident of Assurts and give them an opportunity to be exposed to a local government career, hopefully for her, her follow-on to her military duty. So Tammy, it's a pleasure to have you.
Tammy, yeah. First of all, thank you for your service. Mic's all yours.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm glad to be here.
We'll continue with announcements about coming city events. Mr. James, is there any? Thank you.
Talking to Mr. Kell.
That was my fault, though. He wasn't distracting me.
One announcement, as some of you may know, our work is getting
Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Dr. Brown.
The only thing I have, you recall that last week we deployed in California about an hour south of San Francisco, a 350,000-acre fire. It's now about Unfortunately, there was a firefighter from the Dallas area Same fire, so just fighters and your thoughts and prayers. They are, they are in harm's way, and it is, it's a difficult thing. So they just extended them for another week. It was a two-week deployment, and they extended them for another week. So they're being well-taken accounts, and they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Yes, please pass along our gratitude and appreciation for the work they're doing over in California. Thank you. We'll continue with announcements and recognitions by the mayor. I do have one announcement. I received a letter from UT Health. They were very grateful and appreciated the donation from the KIC Cancer 5K event, cancer research. They have made several advances, and I'm glad to see that our city donated some of the proceeds. And I'd like to see our city to continue to support the KIC Cancer 5K event. All right, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. First on the list is Maggie Titherington. I practiced so much and I had it
Let's close it up.
Titherington, how's that?
Titherington, there you go.
There we go.
Good evening, Council. Quite a few things to talk about tonight. I try, I won't take too long. Just wanted to thank you all for participating in the Chamber Bowl, those of you all that did, and we're so excited because we do have some funds to give away at our next luncheon, which is on September 15th, which also happens to be our civic leaders luncheon. And that luncheon is for incumbents, for candidates, for even cities that don't have any elections, for the school board, for the counties. We just want to invite a forum to where they can have either a promo table if they are running for office, and they can have their information out, or even the opportunities for cities that aren't currently having elections to meet the different businesses that are in the area that attend our luncheons and speak to them, answer questions about their cities, the counties, whatever's going on. And so we're getting a really good response on that, and that is September 15th, and we have one more week before RSVPs close out. We are limiting attendance to 120 people, which is, it's a little bit less than the capacity that is allowed in the civic center. We could probably have 200, but we're still being careful. We're, we're starting to do our events again in person, and we just want to take it slow and be careful and safe, and so far, so good. Everything has been well with Coffee at the Chambers, with our last luncheon, with our Chamber Bowls, so I think we're on the right track. The next day, September 15th, 16th, and 17th, we have something every day. The 16th is accelerated presentation, and what that is, it's limited to 15 people to attend this class, and it's going to teach you how to speak, whether it's one-on-one selling your business, marketing, networking, or to a big group of people. Little bit different than Toastmasters, not quite Toastmasters. Craig Kraus will be presenting this. He's from Georgetown, and that is September 16th, from 7:30 to 11:00 AM. And then the next evening, we're having our first in-person Chamber Mixer, and we're actually using that to introduce one of our businesses who converted their business from a bar business to a restaurant. They're one of the ones taking advantage of the TABC relaxed rules about having food and services, and so you can register online for that, but we're very excited about that. Last but not least, I do have some flyers that I'll leave here for our Shred Day. Our Young Professionals Group in association with our Better Business Bureau, who's a Chamber member, we're doing a free shred day, but I have a little asterix on there. It's, we're suggesting a donation of $5, so you can, you can do about, up to five boxes of your file boxes to be shredded, and if you don't want to donate, that's fine, but what we're trying to do is the young professionals would also like to adopt families for Thanksgiving and Christmas. So 100% of everything that they collect is going to go to adopting a family or families, depending on how much money it is. So the shred day is October 17th from 9:00 AM in the morning till 12:00 PM. It's going to be at the Visitor Center, and we're directing everybody to go through the parking lot, how you came here, to go past the ball fields and wind around so that we can kind of stack the cars that way, and then they'll exit out through the front of the Visitor Center. But it's until noon or until the trucks are filled, and I believe we're going to have three big trucks out there, and as I said, we're just trying to raise some funds to adopt some local families. And that's all I have. Any other information you all need, just stop by our Chamber offices or go to thechamber.info. Thank you.
All right. Next is Dana Eldridge.
Been a while since I've been up here. Numbers disappeared up front. Dana Eldridge, 2628 Gallant Fox Drive, Assurts, Texas, 78108. About a month ago, in one of the consent items, the council voted to sell a piece of property on Main Street, I guess in regards to the Main Street Initiative program. So I chose to drive down Main Street and see what was going on down Main Street, where the property was and all that kind of stuff. No offense to your purple shirt there, Scott, but I saw two, in my opinion, obnoxious-looking purple vehicles parked on opposite sides of the street down close to where I do some business periodically because of my short legs. And it's right across from a bar, the property that you're selling that's going to become a parking lot for that bar. I have run into the problem of bottles in, broken bottles in my tires at that location since that bar has been put up. Going up and down Main Street, I've done it several times this month. There's a couple lots that need serious attention with being mowed, maintained. There's a business that has two dumpsters wide open. One of them, couple of them are full, and they got stuff laying out behind it. They're almost on, worried they're going to have the new sidewalk going down on Main Street. If you're looking at where that's, that's the auto body shop there on Main Street. The Main Street Initiative, it's great. I don't, I don't, you know, it's nice to make it nice, but we're not accomplishing that. Maybe the sidewalks will help. I'm waiting for my street, I've been waiting for 15 years to get old Weetlerstein redone. Assurts Parkway's been done twice now since that time. It's nice to have that done, so I'm going to keep waiting for my, one of the main roads into my area, but we need to clean up some of this stuff rather than just doing this, okay? I saw that consent item, so I started paying a little more attention. Maybe it needs more attention than just me driving up and down.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Dennis, is there any hearing of residents submitted?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered self-explanatory, and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Our regular meeting on August 25th, 2020. Item number two, resolution number 20R-98, a resolution by the city council of the City Assurts, Texas, authorizing expenditures in the amount not to exceed $345,717 with C3 Environmental Incorporated and other matters in connection therewith. Item number three, ordinance number 20F-26, an ordinance by the city council of the City Assurts, Texas, repealing an ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City Assurts and adopting a new ordinance with updated provisions regarding the collection disposition of solid waste and recyclable material in the city, providing the, I'm sorry, providing the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing a servability clause, and providing an effective date. Item number four, resolution number 20R-92, a resolution by the city council of the City Assurts, Texas, authorizing expenditures in excess of $50,000 with TF Harper and Associates, a buyout board purchasing cooperative vendor, and authorizing a purchase totaling $62,737.07 for improvements to the Johnny McDowell Sports Complex. And item number five, accepting Mr. John Bishwall's resignation from the Tax Incommittal Reinvestment Zone Board. Council, do any of these items need to be removed for separate action? If not, is there a motion to approve items, consent agenda items, 1 through 5?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Dollar. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second by Councilmember Hayward. All right, council, any comments?
Mayor, if you will, on item number five, I just want people to know how important Johnny Bishwall was to the city, all the things he contributed to it. So it's with regret that I'll vote to accept his resignation there. And that's all I have.
All right. Okay, council, we have a motion by Councilmember Dollar, a second by Councilmember Hayward. No other comments? Let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Is Ms. Scott on board?
She's not.
She's not? Okay. We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to discussion and action items. Item number six, the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees nomination. Ms. Dennis or Ms. Gonzalez that has the floor?
I can speak to it, Mayor.
Okay.
I speak to it. So this is just simply, it's time to renominate candidates to the Intergovernmental Risk Pool, and there's places 1 through 4 that are up for nomination. Staff's recommendation is simply to, to go with the incumbents, and I think we've listed those on the memo for you. You know, we don't have any better candidates. As far as I know, the, the incumbents have performed their, their jobs well. One, of course, is Mr. Herrera from the City of Sibolo. So that's where we are. We'll entertain questions.
All right, council, floor is open for discussion. No comments? I think we have a specific motion that needs to be read, council. Anyone wants to read the motion? Okay, Councilmember Scott Gliola? Oh. I don't think I got a copy of it. There we go. I got several copies now. All right, there is a motion. Council makes the following recommendations for the Board of Trustee members for place 1 through 4. Place 1 is Robert T. Herrera, incumbent city manager for the City of Sibolo. For place 2 is John W. Buzz Fuller, Fulen, Mayor, City of Henderson. Place 3, Jeffrey Snyder, city manager, City of Plainview. And place 4, Robert S. Hockett, city manager, City of Tomball. On this motion, I, this motion will also allow the mayor to cast a ballot for these, for these candidates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motions been made by the chair, second by Councilmember Scott Gliola. Any other comments? Let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to a public hearing, item number seven, ordinance number 20T-31, an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021, in accordance with the charter of the City of Assurts, Texas, providing for the filing of the budget, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative to all ordinances, providing a servability clause, and providing an effective date. Mr. Walters, you have the floor.
Good evening. James Walters, Finance Director for the City of Assurts. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the budget and then the tax rate, and this is scheduled to be the first vote on each of those. The final vote and adoption currently scheduled for next Tuesday. So the all-funds expense as originally proposed or submitted to council was $89,444,230. The general fund accomplished 41% of that, water and sewer utility 28%, EMS 11%, and then the INS fund at 8%. Fund balance equity, the original budget that was submitted had a proposed decrease of fund balance of 1.9 million and an estimated ending fund balance between all the different operating funds in the city of 61 million. General fund, the highlights of the proposed expanded programs include the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and Unified Development Code update. It included additional $500,000 for CIP funding of one-time, included additional funds for facility maintenance, included the class and complementation action on the employment cost index, and provided additional personnel, additional for personnel recommended by the staffing study. In the water and sewer fund, upcoming projects include the Ware Seguin and Lower Seguin Loop Line projects, the Graytail and Fowl Loop, Fowl Loop Loop Line design, the other one's construction, this one is the design before the construction of the next one, the Corbett Elevated Ground Storage Tank design, the 1518 Utility Relocation Design, the Aviation Heights Waterline Replacement, and the North Coast Country Club Estates AC Pipe Design and Bid. In the EMS fund, they propose hiring for additional personnel, full-time instructor for additional EMT and other classes, 2 12-hour full-time paramedics, and a 24-hour full-time paramedic. And the drainage fund, they're going to wrap up their existing projects and also continue on with the Amazon Channel Drainage Improvement Project. In the Economic Development Corporation, they have improved incentive payouts of just over $3 million, and they've also have for, just over $4 million going towards the Tri-County Road Improvement Project. Now, we do have some updates upcoming. We do not have them submitted now. We're still trying to calculate the final amounts. We did go back and look at the year in projections. There's a $168,000 of additional funds we found through personnel training and equipment savings and updates. We have additional tax revenue, $120,000. The pool contract, since we didn't open Windy Swan Pool, the contract says the City of Assurts actually gets half of that particular contract back, so it's another $90,000 that we'll be getting back from the YMCA. We also have various miscellaneous incomes, donations, insurance payments totaling about $60,000. Overall, there's additional $438,000 for additional projects. We also have some upcoming proposed budget changes that you'll see next week. One is the IT and GIS, we're combining those two departments into one budget, no fiscal impact, but you'll no longer see GIS listed as a separate department or division. We're planning to outfit building 11, $81,000 for furniture as well as computer and copier needs. This is a one-time sort of expense to get the building open and up and running. We're currently evaluating the medical proposal, medical insurance proposals. We're currently evaluating the medical proposal, medical insurance proposals. Estimated $95,000 additional for the general fund. Citywide, it's $120,000. This is currently estimated. The final numbers are still being calculated, so this is one reason we didn't submit any of the adjustments this week, is we're not sure what that cost is going to be. Payroll compression, we'd like to put funds aside to deal with some of the payroll compression comments that the Police Association has presented to council and has talked in the public hearings. Police education pay is another step in towards that direction currently. Our fire and EMS employees get additional compensation for having a associate's bachelor or master's degree. We want to offer those same benefits to the police officers. We also have not seen any additional spike in rental revenue or reservations for our civic and community centers. We're proposing further decrease that by $70,000 in anticipation of not seeing a lot of events kick off until we come further out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then as far as the investment income, we're looking at that for next year, decreasing that by another $90,000. The markets have started to catch up. The Fed lowered the rate to near zero. The market wasn't quick to react, but is now getting to that point where our investment yield is matching that. What that means is where we were getting close to $500,000, we're now getting closer to $10,000 per month. So going down to $120,000. So an overall $380,000 decrease in income related to the Fed dropping the rate during this time. Overall, the payroll compression is kind of a variable. We'd like to put whatever else, other savings, we could towards that program, and then we'll get the final estimate from the medical insurance. Apparently, we're not proposing any changes as far as the tax rate with the additional money we found in the year-end projections. All of these could be covered at some, to some extent. If it's, the medical insurance comes out to $95,000, there could be about $67,000 we could set aside for addressing the compression issue, but at this time, we're not sure. Staff proposes, once we get those, the medical insurance locked in at a final proposal, we'll bring those numbers back for final reading and making the changes we've seen here. But Mayor, that is all I have for the updates on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. This item is on the agenda as an open public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Please step up to the mic. Second notice for any comments regarding this subject? Okay, final notice regarding this subject. I don't see anyone stepping up. Public hearing is now closed. Council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Larson.
Can I, I need to, can I see slides nine and 10 again? Okay, so these are updates to the projections for the upcoming?
For the current year.
For the current year.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a, I don't know, surplus is the right word, but $438,941, additional funds from the current year that's available to be spent on other things.
Yeah, from our original model and the original budget that we submitted, there's an additional $438,000 we've identified.
And then on slide 10, I'm trying to get how these connect. Slide 10 are adjustments to the upcoming budget.
Yes.
And so when I look at this, I see, I mean, I don't, I have my phone calculator out, but I couldn't plug it in fast enough. One, two, three, $370-ish thousand plus the question mark. Where is the funding for these changes coming from?
The majority of these can be funded from this 438.
Okay.
Whatever else we could find, we could recommend putting aside for the payroll compression issue.
And then, so two separate question, but related questions. One, we, this is the first hearing of adopting the final tax rate, and as long as it's below the maximum, equal to or below the maximum tax rate, we don't have to start anything over.
Correct.
And one cent of taxes is equal to relatively $325-ish thousand in revenue? Is that correct?
390.
390. So we could do a half a, I mean, just you don't have to answer this, but to council, I think it's worth considering, we could return, and I think there's been conversations about this, a portion of the $438,000 surplus could be returned to the residents with a half a cent or a one cent decrease in the tax revenue, which is something that I would be very interested in, allowing a portion of that savings to go to these additional budget items, and a portion of the savings to go back to the residents. That's all I have, Mayor.
Council, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Scott Gliola?
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, that, the comments there. You know, anytime you're running a surplus, okay, I understand it's necessary to keep money in the reserve fund, just as a buffer. We have money in the reserve funds. We didn't need as much money last year as we thought we did. COVID, okay, kind of put a damper on things. The way I look at it, I raised about a half dozen different concerns about two or three weeks ago when we first discussed this, about possible savings. I didn't see those addressed at all, not at all. The delta on city expenses is positive in our favor. The tune is something like $440,000. This slide shows that, okay, we may have some budget changes coming along, but they're estimates. It's been my experience on the council, medical insurance, we usually expect that to go up very steeply and then get pleasantly surprised when it doesn't. So it's possible it goes up by $95,000, but historically speaking, doesn't usually go up that high. You know, COVID, it's put a lot of stress around our business community, and yet our businesses are still bouncing back. Sales taxes are still respectable, but it's caused some tightening of the belts for a lot of our residents and everything else. A lot of the agencies that I deal with have frozen their, okay, calling taxes, fees, whatnot, because of the COVID. It has taken an impact on our residents and our community. I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we should probably do the same. I see nothing wrong with going with the effective rate, no new tax rate is what they're calling it now, but I think we have enough wiggle room to actually accomplish that without seriously jeopardizing the services of the city. And that's my position. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
I see the immediate $160,000 decrease in revenue from the facilities and the investments there, and yes, we have a certain number, a certain amount of savings because we didn't send people, you know, two different trainings and events that we normally would have, but what's going to happen next year? Are we going to have continued decrease in income and continued decrease in revenues, and then have to go back to sending people, you know, spending money on training, things along that line? I know we're trying to hire some more people across the board. Is that going to increase our costs? I would be reluctant at this point to change. I don't want to increase anything by any means, but I would, because of the amount of turmoil this year, and I'm not going to say it's, anything's in stone by any means for next year. Still a lot of unknowns on how things are going to progress. That's why, on a personal basis, I think we should just kind of maintain what we have, see where we go through a fiscal year, and if we can continue savings, absolutely, you know, take a look at changes. But if we're not going to see a whole lot of changes, if we stick with what we have right now, it's a known, known quantity, or at least an assumed known quantity, and then reevaluate as we go. That's all I have.
Councilmember Dollar?
I remember a couple of years ago when the council voted to increase the taxes, I was sitting out in the audience at that point, and the discussion and the rationale behind that was to get caught up on deferred maintenance and to take care of some things that we hadn't been taking care of because the funds weren't there, a large part of that being the hole in the budget created by the veterans exemptions. We're losing almost $2 million a year out of our budget from the exemptions, and not to say that they don't deserve it, those veterans have earned that privilege. However, it's unfortunate the state of Texas has set it up in such a way that we bear the brunt of the cost of that. The last couple of years, we started out about $850,000 in deferred maintenance in the Parks Department alone. I think we've whittled down about half of that. We're still several millions of dollars behind on getting caught up on streets. We've done a lot this year, a lot of positive response from the citizens on that. And we also need to address the compression issue of salaries, and, you know, for those reasons, you know, yes, I would like to decrease the taxes, and I think we should work on developing a plan to do that going forward. I don't think we're there yet.
Councilmember Hayward?
I would concur with both Councilmember Brown and Dollar. I don't think we're there yet. I think we need to work on a plan to get there, but I think with, especially the payroll compression issues is a big concern of mine. I think we need to hold a status quo, see where we are next year, and start developing a plan to try and, you know, give some relief to the residents on the rate, but until we see where things are going, I think it's just best to hold.
Councilmember Larson?
Can you, and you may not have this information handy, but last year, was there a difference in expected and actual, and was it positive or negative? Like, did we have more money than we expected?
Yes.
What about the year before?
We did.
Do you remember about how much it was last year?
I have those with me. It is very, due to the laws surrounding how cities operate, it would be unusual for a city not to have more than it ever budgets for at the end of the year.
Okay, so typically, at the end of the year, we have a surplus. Is the surplus generally greater than $390,000 in the past two years?
It has, yes.
Past three years? So we have a pattern that's a good pattern, and I don't, I wouldn't like to see the pattern stop, but that there's more money than we anticipate every year. For the past three years at least, I'm guessing it goes back much further than that, and if there's a year that's not, my guess, and correct me if I'm incorrect, but that year would be an anomaly and not the norm. And I think a lot of that goes to a lot of things based on the laws you said. Also, I know just a lot of times we have budgeted staff positions that take longer to fill than we expect. We have turnover that maybe is more than we expect. We've become more aggressive, probably not a word you would like me to use, but more aggressive in the projections to help compensate for some of that. But I remember when there was the conversation about raising taxes, it was to meet these specific needs, and we still have needs, we'll always have needs. There's finite resources and nearly infinite needs. But it was a pretty quick turnaround from a council perspective to say, yeah, we need, we need these funds, and we need to make this tax increase. But as I look at the history that we have, where there's a consistency that we consistently have more money than we expect at the end of the year, and we've diverted that money to projects, important and meaningful projects, but projects nonetheless, but then there's always this reticence. It's very quick to say, yeah, we can, we have to raise the tax rate to meet these needs, but the reticence to reduce it when we have the surplus is very strong. And if we have a reserve fund that well exceeds our policy for reserve funds, we have a surplus of money consistently that well exceeds the fraction of a penny that it would take to maintain our effective tax rate. If we have survived in a global pandemic without major damage to our structural economy within the City of Shirts as it relates to city revenues, then if that's not the time to return that money to the residents, what is? Like, is there any, anything else primed more? Is there anything better than having a healthy excessive reserve fund, having a budget that is conservatively built but continues to withstand the rigor of a budgeting process where we have a surplus far exceeding what we're looking to maintain for the tax rate, where we're growing in our ability to meet the maintenance, the deferred maintenance that we've had, we're hitting it. In fact, we're hitting it to the level where staff said last year, if we spent any more money on it, they wouldn't have the resources to use that money. And so now we're sitting here, we're saying, hey, there are going to be some impacts to our budget that we need to look. None of them look insurmountable. Add it all together, it's about half of what our regular difference in anticipated expenditures are, and we have a $438,000 or whatever that came out to be surplus where we could make, we could take the effective tax rate, which is the same per capita tax rate per citizen, with new revenue coming from growth in the community. We can continue to do the projects that we've committed to doing, and we can give a little bit of relief in the tax growth for our residents when our economics are sound, and we're saying, oh, I don't know if now's the time to do it. I mean, what are we, what are we waiting for, manna to fall from heaven? I mean, if there's ever been a time to do it and to provide that relief, this is the time to do it. And if you're not comfortable doing it now, I think it's probably time you admit that you're probably never going to be comfortable with it, because there's never going to be a situation that's more, that's safer to do it than right now. And so I know some of the members in council are reticent to do that, but I encourage you to take the information that we just saw, that consistently we have a surplus of funds that far exceeds the point, the 67 percentage, 67% of a penny that would be required to maintain our effective tax rate, and send a message to the community that, yeah, when our economic indicators are positive and we're making progress that we promised we would make, we're going to continue making that progress, but we're also going to be respectful of your budgets as well, so.
Councilmember Scott Gliola?
Yeah, let's continue the roundtable, I guess. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Apparently, you see that he and I are reading off the same sheet of music. Okay, a couple of things. You know, let's start developing a plan. You know what? I heard that two and a half years ago, and it seems like now we're going to that dance again. Let's start developing a plan. The plan should have been developed and implemented two and a half years ago. Now, our veterans, the veterans exemption, how much money does the city lose because of those veterans exemptions? Okay, here's my take on it. We lose absolutely nothing, okay? Because to me, taxes aren't revenue. There's a reason that exemption exists for our veterans. Now, the state does compensate us for a portion of technically what we're losing because of the exemption. How much was that supposed to be this year, by the way?
About $300,000.
$300,000. You know what? I'm looking to get down to the effective rate or the no new taxes rate, and that would only cost $275,000-ish. I'm going with 70 cents or .7 cents instead of the .69. The money's available, okay? We have the money. You know, what's it going to be next year? You know, we do these budgets year after year after year after year. If we're doing a five-year budget, that would be different. We actually have to portion it out over the five years. But let's handle 2020, 2021 and see what's happening. We've met our obligations, our responsibilities, year after year after year, and our fund balance has grown considerably. I remember back in the time when they said, well, you know, 25%, that's a pipe dream. I remember back in the time when they said, well, you know, 25%, that's a pipe dream. There's no way in the world we will ever get our fund balance to 25%. Oh, really? It's amazing. Miracle upon miracles. Now we're spending off the fund balance. Delayed maintenance is never, never a good plan. Saving your money for that rainy day, that's a good plan, okay? But when you have enough in your rainy day fund to cover your expenses for the next year for unforeseen situations, well, then enough is enough. And when you run into surplus, who is it that provided that surplus? It's our business owners. It's our residents. Pardon me for getting about my soapbox, but I haven't sang the same song since I've been on this city council. I like efficiencies. I really do. And if we're going to implement a little bit of efficiency, this would be the year to do it, definitely. As far as starting another plan, come on. I've heard that song before. That's all I have, sir.
Council, any other comments? Councilmember Larson.
I have a question about when we vote for the tax rate, how many, it's got to be a certain, how many people would, out of six of us, I guess, tonight?
Since we have seven council, for the tax rate vote, we need five ayes to pass.
All right. And then, well, I mean, I might as well try it, right? I make a motion.
This is the budget.
Oh, this is the budget, yes.
The question is then is if the budget is what's in question. I think we can pass the budget, but the rate will have you make some adjustments to the budget. Am I correct?
We need some guidance then. If you're not going to, you know, if you want to pass a lower tax rate, so do you want us to fund these things? And assuming whatever risk there is, that we can do that? In other words, we would pass this budget as it is, and then you would pass the tax rate? If you wanted to pass a lower tax rate? Or, you know, do you want us to say, you don't want us to fund these items, and you want to pass the lower tax rate? I mean, there's some risk.
You'll make adjustments based on the tax rate, am I... I'm trying to...
Depends on the budget that you all pass.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Larson.
Well, just a question to follow up on that. Obviously, I only speak for myself. We haven't passed a tax rate. But if we were to pass a lower tax rate and the instruction was to use, to fund these items with the surplus of... Is that a sufficient, like, is that okay instruction or would that not be enough?
We would ask council to approve the budget as submitted. And then when we get to the tax rate, council will adopt a tax rate separately. And we would assume...
But then y'all would use that, whatever instruction council gave, to go back and adjust the budget in the future or later, not till later in the year?
It wouldn't... So everything, all the expenses would be approved by council and allowed for us to go forward. Now, if the revenue was not sufficient or we didn't have the savings in expenses, we'd be monitoring that and we'd make adjustments mid-year or just not do a program or freeze hiring or something, some such, to make sure that our revenues matched our expenses.
So this, and so this item is to approve the budget, correct?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 20T31.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And there's a second over there. Councilmember Davis has some comments. We'll allow Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I'm on the same page here. I mean, the budget as presented is a living document. As Councilman Larson pointed out, every year, we have increased funds that pop up. That's not just from extra taxes that were generated. Sometimes that's from items in the budget that we budgeted for that slip in the budget, don't get done. We talk about bringing on six, seven, eight, nine more positions. But when we bring those positions on is when we start incurring those costs. So there really shouldn't be an issue with approving the budget as we have it. And we work the budget as we go forward based on the money that we have. And even if we lower the tax rate, which I don't think is necessarily a bad idea, we may still end up with that increased money at the end of the year based on sales tax revenue and other revenues that reverse themselves over the course of the next year, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Larson, second by Councilmember Brown to approve the budget as it was presented. Any other comments one last time? If not, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry. Okay. We have five ayes, one objection. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Walters. We'll move on. Mr. Walters, you have the floor.
All right. Mayor and council, the 2019 taxable value was $3.7. Those same properties in 2020 were evaluated at $3.78 billion. And we have new development of $120 million for a total 2020 taxable adjusted value of $3.9 billion. Overall, $151 million increase. We have the couple of tax rates the state makes us calculate, the no new revenue, the tax rate at which we'll generate the same amount of revenue for the city from properties on the previous year's tax roll. The voter approval rate, the rate at which exceeded, triggers an automatic election this coming November on the tax rate. And then I'll show you our current and the proposed maximum. So the no new revenue would be 50.79. This is the rate council could adopt. And so it would be no additional revenue from existing properties. The voter approval rate was 52.47. We can no longer go to that rate. The current rate's 51.46. And the proposed preliminary rate, we included on the notices, was 51.46. We can go lower still, as council has mentioned. We cannot go higher. One penny is equal to $390,000 of revenue or 24.45 on the average home. The original proposal was to have the INS rate go from 16.50 to 16.51. And the MNO would go from 34.96 to 34.95. At the new revenue, the average tax bill within the city of Shirts would increase $41. This is the new average home value of $244,000 includes new property. That's one of the reasons why it goes up. Those new homes have a higher taxable value and then brings up the average. Our current at 51.46 would be an average bill increase of $58. This would be a $17 annual increase on the average home to keep the same tax rate. Just for information, the voter approval rate of 52.47, increase of $82, would be an average annual increase of $41 on the average home. Historically, the MNO rates was 33.45 in 2006 and 2020. Original proposed was 34.95. We've been very consistent the past two years. The original proposal was to maintain that consistency. I do have some other news to share. It will be on the September 22 agenda. We've identified a potential refunding to take place from the 2011 bonds. Could result in a $100,000 annual savings on the INS side. It's not available in time to include on this tax rate discussion, but staff want to council to know, especially with the input we got at the retreat, where we want to start moving more of the INS rate over to the MNO to help start funding the large list of capital projects that, the capital project plans that we've been putting together for the past couple of years. Since we had that discussion, we want to start moving more money from INS to MNO to do the maintenance type items. And we'll identify projects that are still within council's vision to be debt issuance, but especially items, we'll start moving those over. So with a relooking at what kind of project timelines we have, as well as the $100,000 annual debt service savings we'll have, not this year, but next year, it looks like we'll have room to start moving that money from INS to MNO. Just want you to be aware that at that time, it's also an opportunity. When we move those funds over to the MNO, if council wants to keep the same tax rate now and adjust the tax rate and give some money back next year, that could be an option as well. Don't put all of it into the MNO, but give some of it back. It's also an opportunity at that time. But other than that, we have, we'll have more discuss on that on September 22.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walters. This item is on the agenda as an open public hearing. Also, is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? For the record, could you please state your name and address?
Maggie Tarrington, 5325 Storm King, Shirts. I'm trying to make sure that I understand all this. And I really appreciate James explaining it with the budget. I understand the budget with the tax rate. And I understand what Councilman Larson is also speaking about. I tend to go on the side of being conservative. I know that our city has done really well in budgeting and reserves and things like that. But I am in agreement of not doing a lowering of our taxes at this point. I may be alone in my residence, but I'm trying to figure out what the percentages and the monies. James just showed .01% equaled like $41 a year per household. And I'm thinking, do I want $41 back for that year in a tax rebate? Or would I rather reinvest it in the staff here or another police officer or getting Weiderstein Road some monies towards that? There are so many projects that we could be doing that I believe that with all the things that we've been so tight on, on our budget to conserve and because we don't know what's going to happen with COVID and are we going to go back, I would rather err on the side of caution as a resident and keep my monies invested in the city to trust you all and trust you all to do the right things and make the right decisions. So I myself, I would rather the tax rate remain the same. Thank you.
Okay. Second notice for any comments regarding this subject? Final notice for comments regarding this subject. Public hearing is now closed. Council floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we're all taxpayers too. Every one of us up here pay taxes. I'm looking at my commercial property taxes and saving a couple hundred dollars on a $20,000 tax bill is not going to make a big difference for me from a corporate standpoint. And saving $40 on a residential tax bill is not going to make a big difference either. Again, as a taxpayer, not just as a councilperson, I understand that everybody wants to save money. I get it. All right, nobody wants to pay taxes. But at the same time, we need to, from a council point, look at more projects where we could better invest the funds that we do have and never spend money unnecessarily. But we need to spend money to make the city better where we can, to hire more better whatever people. Like I say, I know we've been short up to 10 police officers for a long time. You know, and once we start hiring them, there's going to be other costs with that too. Longer-term costs. That's why I'm afraid to lower anything at this point until we see what we're doing. We know that we're going to have reduced income from other areas, increase from property value increases, but how long is that going to last? I don't know. So again, as a taxpayer and as a councilperson, reticent to change at this point. But as we monitor through the year, maybe the halfway point through fiscal year '21, take a real good close look at it instead of waiting until September to try to change things. That's all I got.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, I'm sort of on the bubble here. I kind of agree with what Councilman Brown just said. I mean, I, to me personally, it's not a significant change going from 51.46 to a lower number. But I wonder how many of us are the exception to the rule across the city? You know, not everybody has the luxury of having a good-paying job or other sources of income that's impacting their ability to pay their taxes and their ability to live day-to-day. During our budget meetings, we talked about how the long-term goal of the city should be to stop kicking cans down the road and fixing things in the here and now. And let's not bond unless it's something that we need to bond for and not bonding for stuff that's day-to-day maintenance stuff. And I think the city staff understands that fully and they're working in that direction. And that's a fantastic thing. On the same token, in 2018, I was at the forefront of saying, let's add some sense to our budget so that we can get after these deferred costs that we've been kicking down the road. And the staff has done an exceptional job, in my opinion, on doing that. We're fixing parks that need to be fixed. We're taking care of streets and drainage that need to be taken care of. And we've got that built into the budget this year. But I think Councilman Larson and Councilman Skagill have great points. You know, at some point, if every year, I understand that our concept in the city has always been that we are conservative on our forecasting for dollars. But if every year, we're coming up with $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 that are a result of our being conservative on our tax rate and being sensible and conservative on our projects and getting value on our projects. You know, at some point though, it seems that we just keep on having a surplus and the end mindset, and it's nothing against the city of Shirts or the staff, because I'm willing to bet that every city and every organization out there that does that, when they have a surplus, they find some way to spend that surplus. So at the end of the day, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to maybe throttle back a bit. We did two years. We knocked out a lot of projects, a lot of park projects. We have the money in the budget now to continue with those drainage and street projects and parks projects. And I'm willing to bet that if, when we have this conversation the middle of next year, we're going to end up saying, yeah, we, our streets came in under budget and our drainage came in under budget and our parks came in under budget. And we were still able to bring down the list of deferred projects, but we did so under budget because that's the way we've been doing business. And then we're going to have the same discussion to say, well, you know, now we've got an extra $300,000. What would be nice to have? Back two years ago or so, when we had these budget discussions, we sort of changed how we do business in the Shirts, in the city of Shirts. Instead of the staff coming up with just a list of projects and saying, here's what it takes for dollars for that, we asked them to come back with a list of what the city needs and present that to the council so we can make those hard decisions of what's a must-pay, what's a nice-to-have. And there's some of that in this budget. We have, I think, a very sensible budget that we just passed. But like I said before, there's some wiggle room in that budget. There are some things that are only done starting one October. And there are some things in there that I'm willing to bet as we go through the entire year aren't going to get done or they're going to come into the savings. There's a few things that are going to come in over budget. That's the nature of business. But again, I don't think it's a bad time to start having that discussion of, when do we start throttling back? Again, I'm not looking for a magic number. I've heard the discussions back in 2018 where we've always been less than .50. And I don't think there's a magic number. I don't think it matters whether we're at 50 cents or 51 or 49 or 48. For me, it's always been a matter of having the right budget to do the right things for the city and make those hard calls. But, you know, when we get a presentation that says, again, we've looked at the previous year and we've got some excess money and here are some things that we're looking about going forward. Compression, I think it's a discussion that we have to have of pay compression among the city staff. But we don't even know what that answer is yet. And that same topic ties into a lot of other staff compensation issues, not just compression. It deals with merit pay, education pay, and a whole other factors in there. It's not just one item. It's several. You know, we have facility rentals with, who are not. You know, if you go back to that slide, please, if you... You know, if you go back to that slide, please, if you have it. Next layer. Facility revenue, facility revenue, rental revenue decrease, $70,000 upcoming budget. I mean, that's a forecast. I can understand where we're anticipating, where we think that we might have an increase of 95K on medical insurance. I can see where we've come up with a number for 81K on outfitting Building 11. Facility rental revenue decrease? I mean, I don't, I don't understand how we say we expect to have a decrease. Is that based on COVID, or?
It's based on how many reservations we currently have a year out. Generally, the Civic Center is booked a year out almost entirely. And right now, we have a lot of openings.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, I get that, but that's a wag. The 70K is a wag. The investment income decrease is, to me, is a wag. It could be a decrease of 90,000, it could be a surplus of 190,000. We just don't know with the way this country's going right now. And you know, payroll compression, we have question marks on there. So I can, I, I don't have a problem with maybe talking about throttling back a bit. Again, it's not a lot of money to me. You know, to be, to me, if you want to be honest, I personally would support a tax increase to a higher rate. I see projects that we have in the city that, you know, we keep on kicking a can down in the skate park. And that's a phase one of three phases, and we have no plan on when we're going forward. There's a lot of other things in the city that I personally would like to see done. And I wouldn't mind paying me, myself personally, more to see that done. But it's not about me, it's about the 40,000 residents that we have in the City of Shirts. And I'm willing to bet that there's not a lot of them. There's more that are not in my shoes that have that extra money than did not. So I'm okay with having the discussion of maybe, maybe it's time we start throttling back and we rely on our staff to start working out those plans and being good stewards like they have been of our dollars. And let's start working towards getting back our, our tax rate to a lower rate that is putting more emphasis on maintenance and operations than the sinking fund. And we'll see where it goes from there.
Councilmember Larson.
Yeah, I think, I don't mean to be too aggressive on this because there are a lot of priorities that the city has, of course. But I think there's a fallacy in budget discussions as it relates to government conversations that happens all the time. And it's only $20 per house per year. Who can afford $2 a month, right? Well, and that's a good argument. I mean, it's the same technique a salesperson uses when you're buying a pool, right? They don't, they're not going to tell you, oh, it's $120,000. Like, oh, this pool is going to improve the value of your house, and it's going to, you're going to have it for the next 30 years. And in that case, it's only $18 a month for you. I mean, who can afford $18 a month for a pool? I mean, it's a great argument from that perspective. But the reality is, it's not just $17 a year, or $20 a year, or $40 a year. It's cumulative, right? Right now, I live in a house that is probably about the median cost of a house in the City of Shirts. And I pay probably more than $500 a month in property tax. Well, that's only 29 years of $17 a year increase, right? That's all it is, that's it. It was only $17 a year increase 29 years ago, and 28 years ago, and 27 years ago. And that's, that's only factoring in our portion. Sure, we can't control what the school district does, we can't control what the county does, we can't control what the water district does, we can't control all of these things which are these also. For them, it's only $5 a year. Well, that's a bargain, $5 a year. For them, it's only $48 a year. You're not going to spend $48 more a year to educate your child and... But it's a fallacy because that's not, that's not what it is. It's this cumulative approach that now I'm spending over $6,000 a year in the median cost home of the City of Shirts paying property taxes. Now, that's not a total loss. Yeah, I say $600 a month. Certainly, I enjoy the roads. I think we live in a nice community. I love having police and fire and EMS. And I like that we have the Economic Development Board. I like these things and the nice parks. Yeah, certainly, it's not a loss. But it's not just $17 a year, it's $617 a year plus. That's only our portion, so multiply that by five for the rest of the portion, and then add in all the other fees and services and permits and costs. And if you look at the realities, I buy a house, I'm going to pay the house off in 30 years. Let's say I'm not a Dave Ramsey guy, so I'm not going to do it in a 15-year note. I'm going to be an American guy, and I'm going to have tons of credit card debt and pay my house off in 30 years. Well, $17, $20 a year for the City of Shirts, plus $80 a year for the other taxing that's $100 a year over 30 years, well, now we're talking about $3,000 a year. Well, what if we sell it that way? Don't worry, it's just a cumulative $3,000 a year. In 30 years, you'll just be paying $3,000 more a year. Well, I can afford that. That, well, I would imagine most of the people who run for political office and have to spend $2,000 to $5,000 or more to run for office probably don't bat an eye at even $3,000 a year in increase. I would venture to guess there's a pretty significant portion of our population that could better use that money for college funds, or grocery funds, or retirement savings. And so I think that the fallacy of, oh, it's only $20 a year, I could easily pay that. Well, everybody should easily pay that too. Well, that's not what it is. In fact, when I look at my property tax bill, and you look at your property tax bill, you'll see it's definitely a whole lot of years of just $20 a year added up. And we do our tax rate every year. It's not like we're saying, hey, everything is going gangbusters for us now. Let's set a tax rate that's barely conservative. And it's going to be the tax rate we have for all of eternity, no matter what happens, we can never adjust. We've already adjusted once. We raised the tax rate, I was against it, the rest of the council wasn't, they did it. I think, if I had to do it again, I would have voted no again. But have we used the money effectively and wisely? Yeah, we have a good staff, we have a good team on council. And so they took the money that we had and allocated it well. But it's not just this $17 a year. And then you factor, and I think I did calculations. Imagine being on a fixed income, whether that be social security, or retirement, or whatever that fixed income is, certainly $17 a year begins to add up a little bit quicker. But also, just in the state of Texas, is the property tax crisis, which certainly is not exclusively the fault of municipalities. The state has their own bucket to carry for that. But we're looking at in about 10 to 15 years, it won't be uncommon for people's tax bill to be bigger than their mortgage payment. I mean, that's insane. Now, we can't fix the world here in Shirts. We can't address the Texas property state tax crisis that they've been talking about the past three years without doing any meaningful things to address it on the state level. We honestly probably can't even get to a point where it's not a couple dollars more a year anyways. But to go down less, the rate down less than a penny, I think it's 67, I don't even know how to say that mathematically, but 67% of a penny, which is equal to $261,300 in estimated reduced revenue, which is less than the surplus we had this year, less than the surplus we had last year, less than the surplus we had the year before, less than the surplus we had the year before, less than the surplus we had the year before. And I imagine I could probably take another five minutes and still be accurate. It's not saying we're going to always keep a lower tax rate. It's not saying we're going to stop being conservative in our projections and our spending. It's not saying we're not going to continue the long-term goal of reducing our reliance on debt and putting it in the maintenance and operation budget. It's not saying we're going to stop working towards our goals and improving our parks and rec and fleshing out our road program. It's saying, hey, we understand that there's, there's a world of people out there that are asking for you just for just 17 more dollars a year. And we can be one more of those, but we're doing well. Our grain is full, our silos are full, our reserve fund is bigger than the policy says it needs to be. Our revenues are coming in higher than we expected. We're in the middle of a pandemic where people are struggling to keep their businesses open. People have been furloughed, people have lost their jobs, or they've been, now they're underemployed because they've moved. They're not able to go home and say, oh, look, our revenues have stayed exactly the same like the City of Shirts can. We were pleasantly surprised that our sales tax revenues haven't dropped. And so to take an opportunity and say, hey, I've got a cup full, I'm willing to give you a thimble, is not an unreasonable, unconservative, dangerous, risky proposition. It's simply saying, our grain silos are full, we know not all of your grain silos are full. We can't, we still have a city to run, but we can show you that, that we're on your team. And we're not going to keep, we're not just going to build bigger and bigger silos eternally. At some point, we're going to stop siphoning that grain from you because our silos are full. And it's not like we're asking for us to drop down to some ridiculous tax rate. To be at the effective tax rate is a reduction of .0067. The tax rate that I'm proposing of .5079 is still greater than the tax rate was before we raised taxes a couple of years ago. So it's not a radical proposition. And so understanding that there's still probably opportunity for plenty of discussion, I make a motion, I move that the property tax rate remain flat by the adoption of the no new tax rate of .5079, which is a 0% increase in the tax rate.
Second. Before we continue, is there any comments? Councilmember Dolly.
You know, it's a, it's a great philosophical discussion, you know, and it's, it's good that we're having it. And I'm glad we can have it. In a lot of, a lot of places, you can't have conversations like this without resorting into screaming and shouting matches. But our number one cost in our city is our payroll. It's the most important part of our budget is how we compensate our employees. Because that relates to employee satisfaction and the performance that we get as a result of them being happy with where they're working and giving us the best that they've got. We've had a pretty significant expression by staff on the issue of salary compression. And that is something that we really need to address, and we've all recognized that, and we've acknowledged that. And yeah, like, like Mr. Larson said, it's, it's only $17, it's only $41. But by going through and reducing the amelable funds by reducing the tax rate also reduces the amount that we can help out by addressing the compression issue and that the increases that we can provide to our employees is going to be greater than that $41 a month that the taxpayers are paying. And I think the taxpayers will see a better result in the monies that we're spending and the efforts that the staff is putting forward to give us the biggest bang for a buck. And I may not be quite as eloquent as Mr. Larson on that, but I, I feel that the right thing to do is to look at where we're at on the budget and to focus on finding out how we can come up with the best way to address the compression issue with the city staff. And by reducing the pot of money that's available to do that, I don't think it's the best way to go.
So just to give you some, you know, some context, a budget is going to be, or what the cost for compression is going to be, but it's likely to be several hundred thousand over four years. I mean, that's, that's likely to, it's going to be on that magnitude.
To have a meaningful impact, yes, it's going to be several hundred thousand.
It's not going to be 25,000 a year, it's going to be several hundred thousand.
Council, Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dolly. We have those kinds of things that are going to be better for the city in the long run. Additionally, I just, just hate the idea that here we are at the final month on doing our public hearings and readings, and we get proposals to change, and we've been working on this for two months, so.
To be fair, we just found out about the $438,000 surplus. That was not told to us months ago. So new information certainly is acceptable to have new ideas.
I get that.
Okay. Councilmember Skagill.
Yeah, just let me point a couple of things out. You know, adopting the effective rate or no new tax rate doesn't necessarily mean the taxes aren't going up, because houses have appreciated in value. So taxes will still go up slightly. This particular budget though, yeah, I've heard comment that, well, we got to make sure our payroll is fully funded. Well, you're absolutely right. We have to make sure we pay our employees what they deserve. That's addressed in this budget, the way it stands right now. Well, we need more personnel out there. Everybody knows we need more personnel, we need more policemen, we need more firefighters, we need more EMS, Public Works. Yeah, you betcha, we need those. It's covered in this budget. And oh, by the way, there are, there are a couple of increases in the number of personnel. But I'm led to believe that the increase in number is the number that's needed now. So we're not shortchanging anything by not raising the taxes to the full rate. There is, the way I can see it, there is no specific strategy on how to address this compensation or inversion problem that we're working on. That's going to be a couple of months down the line before anything happens. Because I don't see a whole lot of work taking place. Now, it may be behind closed doors, but I'm not privy to it. Chances are, we won't see anything for at least six months, perhaps a year. Any increases in funding are not addressed in this budget. We're looking at this budget the way it, the way it is presented right here and right now. Are there savings available? Indeed. And that's why I'm in favor of it, at the very least, going with the effective tax rate or the no new tax rate. This budget is fully funded, as it stands now, even with the decrease from the, from the initial proposed. That's all I have to.
Okay, Councilmember Haywood.
Going back to something I was saying, typically someone who's on social security, their property tax is frozen, so they're probably not going to get an increase. Second of all, we keep making it seem like everyone, and I get that we don't want to raise taxes, and that's not something, I'm a taxpayer, and I go protest my property tax every single year. But when we have a median home rate of $285,000, that doesn't speak that we have a whole lot of people that aren't having it. I get there, some people lost their jobs and things like that. But when I look at the $285,000 median home sales rate, yeah, we're not where we're having some issues of, of people not being able to afford it when we've got two Starbucks in our city. I mean, people are buying coffee like crazy, and they're spending $5 a pop or more on coffee. Not mean, but there are those. And they stay busy up until COVID. And so we keep looking at this, and I keep thinking about the fact that, yes, it's funded, but I also look at the payroll compensation rate. And I have been doing research with our public safety who was looking for compensation and wanting to do things differently. I'm, I'm still doing my research, called around other cities. And Dr. Brown got some calls probably from people saying, hey, this is what she's doing. Because I do things and research myself. And I'm just looking at some of the things that I think, as a city, there are things that we keep saying we're going to work on that we don't get to because, and I think we need to do that. We need to stay the status quo and make sure that we're doing the best thing that we can do and with the excess money. Because if you're talking about one penny, and it's going to save me $20 or $40, I'm not going to notice it, especially if I have a mortgage. I'm not noticing that in my mortgage. And it's different if your house is paid off and you're having to pay your own tax, property tax out of your budget. But typically, most people, they budget for that every year, and they go, hey, this is my taxes, and oh, I don't want to make sure that I have that. I don't think it's going to affect them as well. And I think, I get that we want to do this. And sometimes I think we talk about lowering the tax rate for the sake of saying we're lowering the tax rate, instead of looking at all the other things that can be done and applied with it. And I'm just not ready for that when I don't know that there are things in the city that we need to do, and we need to get about doing that. And this extra $438,000, which is, to me, is not even extra because people always like to say, oh, extra money. It's not really extra because there's something it can be done with. And looking at some of the things and the decrease that we've had, we don't know what's going to change in 2021. And for them to scramble and go, oh, my gosh, we don't have enough money, so now we can't do this, that, and the other, I'm not ready for that. And things that may have to get cut. Um, and things that may have to get cut on the budget because we didn't do our due diligence and things change. So I'm not for lowering the tax rate, not at this moment.
Okay, any other comments?
Just, just for matter of, of fact, I think it's important to recognize that a significant portion of the citizens of Shirts rent their property. I think last time I checked, it was somewhere around 38% to 40% of residents which are renting. So if you're renting, uh, property taxes are not frozen for your landlord and they certainly don't eat that cost themselves. So while we, many of us, I can't speak for all, everyone, but while many of us on council have openly said we've been richly blessed, uh, that is not necessarily a representation of everybody in the community. And we do represent those 40% of people who are renters as well, many of them on fixed incomes, many of them who do not have the benefit of free frozen property taxes because the landlords certainly have to meet certain cash flow thresholds in order to continue to be landlords and, and keep their property. So, um, that's a pretty significant chunk of the population that should not be forgotten.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, point of information, Ms. Dennis, is, does this require a super majority? It does? Okay. So five votes, uh, five yays are required in this situation, just, uh...
Point of information, Mayor? With, um, Councilmember Scott not being here, how is that going to work with the vote?
I will be casting the vote.
Still need five.
Oh, you're casting her vote? You're casting the vote? Okay.
If need be.
Since, since Councilmember Scott is not here, it, it doesn't matter, we have seven seats, so we still need five yeses.
You still need five yeses.
But, but the mayor, he's not going to vote, is he? Because there's not a, there's not a... Yeah. So, can I just...
But even the tie would not give us a super majority, is what I'm saying.
Right. So, so can I just review here what, what is possible? If you, if you lower the tax rate, back to the effective rate or no new revenue rate, and James, just to answer my question, you're going to, you're going to show a, a decrease of 260,000 on the revenue side of our budget.
How we put that on the...
Where we are now.
Put it on the revenue.
You're going to, you're, you'll show a decrease of that. And so what we're saying is we're, we're going to fund these items. We're going to, you all instructed us to, to fund those items. So what you're saying is that you think we can, we can, you know, make that gap?
Well, to clarify, what, what I'm saying is we're going to utilize the $483,000 in additional funds that we have from the previous budget year to go towards the quote-unquote gap. So we'd still continue to have a surplus, even if we adopted the lower tax rate, we would have a surplus over a budget of about $150,000, $160,000.
But, but we have allocated all 438,000.
This does not indicate that. This indicates an allocation of around 300...
Yeah, but, but we, where you see the, the question marks for payroll compression, that's where the delta would go.
Well, yeah, and that certainly should be addressed when we have something that's not question marks there.
So, so my point is this, you're, you're saying, uh, you want to use 261,000. We have already funded all 438,000 based on this chart.
That, I disagree with that because I'm looking at that chart and it does not add up to 438,000.
Well, it does if you put the, the delta in payroll compression, which is what our...
Right now, what we have for payroll compression is question mark, question mark, question mark.
Well, James, what, what, what was your plan with that?
So if the medical insurance comes at 95,000, uh, at least 67,000 would be set aside to address it once it became available. If it's different than the 95,000, it'll go up or down, but that's, staff was asking council to set aside some number to address the payroll compression. When we have the plan, we can do it now with the budget and using the amount we know we have. And if a plan comes in more or less, we can make adjustments at that time. If we don't fund any of it, when we have a plan, we'll have to come back to council and find funds because we've lowered the tax rate.
And how far along are we in, in researching the payroll compression, creating the options and determining the cost of those options?
We're, we're at the beginning stages.
And how long do we estimate that would take?
Well, we, we said we'd report back to council in 60 days, roughly the first part of October. I don't think we'll have a final solution then, uh, but I, I would anticipate in the first quarter.
Okay.
We'd have a solution.
And then we already have some compensation changes based on the class and comp study budgeted in, correct?
Right, that's all factored in.
And that, and how much is that?
So we have, uh, the, the first implementation recommendation has already been enacted, uh, but the, uh, the study did call for a 1% ECI, which is about 211,000 for the general fund that has been programmed into the budget proposed to take effect October.
So the budget that we've passed has already approved at least $200,000 in payroll, uh, adjustments, increases to current staff members. And the amount that we're seeking to reduce tax revenue is less than every previous year that we can think of's surplus. Am I understanding this?
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I'm not, that I...
Well, I just want to make sure the facts are fully understood.
Yeah, well, I think we understand that. What, what I'm saying is that you have, um, you have approved all 438,000 in this budget. You did that tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you, if you lower the tax rate by 260,000, there's, that's risk that the city is assuming. Now, you're saying, you all are saying that we have historically overcome all of those problems, all of those potential problems, and we have historically performed better than we, uh, than we anticipated. And that's true. And we normally do that. So just, I just want that to be clear.
Well, what's our current reserve fund balance?
Uh, we are estimating at the end of this year, we'll be at 11,600,000.
11,600,000, and if we were to...
Just over 3 million over our target.
3 million over our target. So we have $3 million more over our target in the reserve fund and we're asking to risk relative, about half of what our typical annual surplus is. So even if there were absolutely no annual surplus, even if these numbers that you've given here for the first time in my short tenure were wildly underestimated on the negative side and overestimated on the positive side, which would be the ultimate anomaly, there's still an incredible cushion there. So I guess...
Not really.
The, the other question I have, have is, just a matter of understanding how this works, what if neither, if there's no proposal for tax rate adoption that receives the five votes?
Yeah, so that's a good question.
If we don't, well, you know, go to the no new revenue rate. If we don't have a final tax rate adopted by September 30, it'll default to the no new revenue rate.
Which is the 5079.
Yes. Okay. And then my, a follow-up question for that then, because I, look, I don't, I'm not, I'm not running for reelection. I, this isn't a political thing for me, it's a philosophical thing for me, just for a long time. But I've also learned in four years that there's got to be some level of finding the center of the table. So this is not a facetious question, but I do want to ask those who are reticent at going to the effective tax rate, knowing that, I don't know where, where Councilmember Scott is, but knowing that me and Skagliola have pretty strong constitutions for staying firm, and I'm, one, two, three, four, even, and I don't know where Mr. Davis stands, but uh, I certainly feel good about my chances. I, I, I would honestly engage in a conversation that says, okay, if this economic situation of having $3 million above our reserve fund policy, of consistently coming in greater than about, somewhere around half a million dollars or more, I think, I think one year there was almost $2 million excess, um, that we spent on things that needed to be spent on, um, of having hit a global pandemic and our revenues not dropping as, as many other communities have. If this economic situation is not the economic situation where you're willing to consider returning some of the taxes we've collected from the citizens, then can somebody give me an honest answer of what economic situation they would need to see to consider that? And then maybe I can better understand and be able to bend?
So, so just in clarification, there is 3 million in excess, but it is allocated for infrastructure.
Correct, over the course of our five-year budget plan, which we review annually.
When we go down to the, um, the fifth year, we're at 26% based on the current spend plan.
Assuming zero excess at the end of the year, which would be an anomaly...
Agreed.
One year, but would have to happen five years in a row.
Okay, no other comments?
So, uh, Mr. Davis, can you go back to the, uh, previous slide? So we have here on the bottom of the slide, 438,941 additional funds. And so if you go back to the other slide, and so my understanding is, is that your plan was, is that we were going to fund these items out of that 438,000 and that the payroll compression issue, uh, would be budgeted based on what the reality, real numbers are when we get the medical insurance, that basically 100% of the difference was going to go to compression, correct?
That was staff's proposal, yes.
So then if we wind up decreasing the tax rate, uh, on, on the budget, that, that would reduce the amount available for offering to the payroll compression issue?
If we adopt the budget and then lower the tax rate, we will basically have council saying, this is the total number of dollars you can spend. We'll assume the rest of the money through the calculation, because we have a calculation for the tax revenue that the state provides and mandates and the tax assessor collector kind of signs off on. We'll assume as a safety net that the other funds are coming out of reserves and then, um, we will monitor the performance of the budget on the expense and revenue side. And hopefully we'll have under on expenses and, and overages on revenue that we'll never actually see that cut out of reserves. That's what we've heard from council, um, saying, we can do all of the stuff that we've proposed at the dollar amounts we've proposed, we can just do it with a lower tax rate. Historically, that has been the case. We've, um, we've come in under, um, cities across Texas, there are, some of our benchmark cities have come in 105, um, 102% over on revenue and 95% of their, um, budget on expenses is how they come in at. Uh, that's a sort of a benchmark trend and that's where the City of Shirts has come in on those trends the past couple of years. Is difficult for staff to say why or where those excess funds are going to come from. Some years, sales taxes go up quite a bit, other years, it goes down instead of going up. A couple of years, we have almost $3 million of the reserve money that we have in the, that we've been using came from permits. Uh, we didn't expect permits to be that high in those years. They haven't been that high since. But as, there's always some area, or it seems like there's always some area that causes us to come in with, uh, better budgetary performance. So if council adopted the budget, we try to go forward and do the things, monitoring our revenues as they come in, looking for savings or, um, vacancy savings or project savings. And if we don't think we'll hit that mark, we cut off some programs or scale back or not do some of the things we've, we've put in the budget. Um, because I'm a roundabout, longer-winded answer, but adopting two separate things...
You're, you're getting as good as tap dancing as Brian does over there.
Yeah, we're, we approve the budget and that has a list of projects and expenses and council saying, you can spend up to this amount. And then we have a, a property tax rate that will give us funds and if we think those funds will be sufficient enough, we can adopt another tax rate and say that that's going to fund those expenses.
My, my concern, and I'm just going to say this, that it's not very rigorous budget approach to say, I'm going to, I'm going to lower the tax rate, knowing I've got a gap, and I'm just going to wing it and make up the gap because we've always had. That's not very rigorous and that's just my comment.
And just, and also to reiterate the point, you know, during our budget meetings, that was one of our big discussions about the typically very significant surpluses is that we asked you guys to adopt a more aggressive budget process.
We did, we did.
And narrow that margin of error, so to speak.
We, we have done that.
Yes.
And our policy has been the, the excess reserves goes in to fund the capital improvements programs. We have discussions at the retreat, do we move INS money over there? Do we continue to have that savings? And then if it doesn't come in, we change the capital improvement plan. If it does come in, great, we can do additional projects and we don't have to bond. That has been how we had our policy on how we had operated in the past. This year, we're not doing that. We went the more aggressive approach and we did make some changes this year to try to close that gap.
And again, you know, for, for me, for us to continue to address those issues on the deferred maintenance, to address compression, to address deferred maintenance, um, I'm willing to stand firm on the tax rate.
Okay, Councilmember Hayward?
Okay, Mr. Walters, when we're talking about lowering the tax rate, if they're talking about going from the, the no new, going to the no new rate, how much savings is that actually going to be per person, per house roughly? On average?
It should be about $17 annually. Of course, everyone's own property value is unique and they do different things, so we would expect about $17.
And then we talk about lowering the tax rate, but if the appraisals go up higher, even if you lowered, it doesn't necessarily mean your property tax is going to get any lower because the appraisal district keeps raising that bar, correct?
Yeah. Theoretically, the no new revenue rate, so if your, if your home value went up, the no new revenue rate would go down, would drop from your current rate so that the tax bill is the same.
So it'll be the same?
It, that was the intent of it.
In the intent of it.
On average, it should be the same and of course, there's a lot of...
And our appraisal district typically doesn't do the not go up because they went up significantly, I believe, on a lot of people this year. Cause I think there were a lot more protests this year than they were in the previous years, am I correct?
Uh, that was with the appraisal districts.
District, right.
I know Comal County had a difficult time getting through all of theirs. The other counties look like they, um, cleared theirs well in advance of the due date.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? There was a motion on the floor by Councilmember Larson to set the property tax rate at flat with no increase with adoption tax rate of .5079 with an effective increase of 0% on the rate. Once again, any other comments? Not, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a split, three and three. Uh, no, I, even my, my vote won't make a difference here.
We could make four.
You know, what I'd like to do from the bench... Yeah. There's, there's a lot of things that weren't, that we're not looking at, whether or not we get a return or on the disabled vets exemption. We might get 100,000, we might get nothing, we might get 200,000 or 300,000. Seeing that we have a split council, I like to make a motion from the bench here. Let's see if this works. Yes?
So, you voted aye, did you vote?
No, I did not vote. My vote wouldn't make a difference anyway.
Well, I think we need, do we need legal to tell us? Do we need a vote?
I, okay. I go aye. We have four ayes, three objections. Motion still does not pass. In light of that, I'd like to make a motion from the chair that the property tax rate be increased to .5121, which is almost down the middle, a difference of 25 cents, which would make a reduction of $100,000. Hopefully we can get that from, from, uh, the disabled vets and, and it will fill our coffers on that. I'm not sure what the percentage, percentage of increase... I'm not sure what the percentage of increase might be.
It would be .8%.
.8% of increasing the tax rate. Again, that's .5121. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
May I have a point of information?
Yes.
This is actually the fun part of politics. Everybody not supposed to admit that, but it's true. If we don't come to a supermajority tonight, there are, there are future, it keeps coming to council until what date?
September 22nd, unless we call another vote. So if we don't have the supermajority, we have until September 22nd to get it without calling another council, and then it will automatically default to the no new revenue rate.
Well, could we call another special council meeting?
We can, yes. We just have to post it within, okay, so many days.
And Mayor, your, your motion was for a rate of .5121?
That is correct, yes. A 25 cent decrease, .25 cent decrease, which is approximately $100,000 that will be a shortfall, and not the 260.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from the chair, second by Councilmember Davis. Any other comments or questions?
Just, I guess in the spirit of compromise, it seems like a fair...
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have five ayes and two objections.
We can't vote.
Well, that's true, but you gotta have the five either way. How is this going to work?
Well, we have, okay, so...
We don't have the five votes, and it's not going to work either way.
So I am open to the idea of compromise. I don't know that I'm open to it right this second.
Two readings.
Yeah, and so that's why, just for, for council members, I don't, I think I'm open to compromise. I don't know that I'm open to do it now, and that's why I asked if we have more time. I'd like to maybe have some more conversation and thought on it, which is why I cast a no vote tonight, not to be completely unreasonable and unmovable. I'll try to open my heart to somewhere in the middle. I don't know if I'll take the first offer of 5121 or not, but I just want to clarify that for my council members.
Okay, we still have a split decision. Councilmember Davis?
Mr. James, if, at the 5126, that was, you said a .8% increase?
The 5121 was .83%.
.5126, what would the increase be for a 5096, we do a half a cent?
A 5090 or 5096?
5096.
5096 would be a .33% increase. I would support that.
.33?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .5096, which is effectively a .33% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
So how much is that, James?
50 cents, so we're looking at .5...
About $130,000.
Okay.
Are we going to keep the INS the same, or is this just going to be MNO?
Yes. We have already calculated the debt rate, so that one's pretty much set. Any adjustments now would be on the MNO.
Okay, so we have a new motion. Motion's been made by Councilmember Davis to set the tax rate at .5096, with an increase of, what was it, 1...
.33. .33.
.33? .33, with an increased percentage of .33 on the tax rate. Second by Councilmember Dalla. Let's, do you have a question, Councilmember Larson?
No, but just because the state makes us read that language to clarify for the audience, the current rate is .5146, the motion rate is .5096. The state has made laws that make it intentionally confusing.
Now I'm confused. All right. Any other comments?
Do I need to restate the motion?
I think the, I think it's .5096.
Effectively a .33% increase on the tax rate here.
Yes. All right, let's go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
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 Nay. Nay.
Aye.
We still have...
Let's get this thing agreed to.
We still do not have a consensus here.
Make a motion to table until next meeting?
Well, I don't think we can table, I think, right now, the, the effective rate is going to be .079 is basically what it defaults to, if I'm not mistaken. Even if we don't have the, the correct number of votes, the effective rate will be staying at .5079, with no increase until this council decides exactly where we go, since there is no consensus. Any other questions or any other comments?
I mean, I think if there's no further motions, it just goes to the next meeting.
Yeah, it just goes to the next meeting. So it is tentatively at .5079. We'll find a happy medium. All right.
We're tasking the staff on the budget, if the budget's settled.
That is correct, yes. There's no, there's, it's difficult to plan when you don't know what, what it is at that point. Let's go roll call confirmation. Our City Secretary Brenda Dennis will provide us a roll call confirmation on consent agenda items one through five, discussion items number six and seven. And Ms. Dennis, I don't know how we're going to address number eight. We had three votes on number eight, if I'm not mistaken.
Consent agenda items one through five. Motion was made by Councilmember Dalla, seconded by Councilmember Hayward. Councilmember Davis, Larson, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no, motion passed. Item number six, motion was made by the chair, seconded by Councilmember Skagliola, to appoint for place one, Robert Herrera, place two, John Fallon, place three, Jeffrey Snyder, place four, Robert Pack, and to allow the mayor to cast the ballot on behalf of the City of Shirts. I was seconded by Councilmember Skagliola, Mayor Pro Tim Davis, councilmembers Larson, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes, no one voted no, motion passed. Item number seven, ordinance number 2231 on first reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Larson, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Councilmembers Davis, Larson, Dalla, Hayward and Brown voted yes, Skagliola voted no, motion passed. And with all the motions for item eight, nothing passed.
Passed, yes.
There was three different motions and nothing passed.
Okay. Now, there were three motions, so once again, let's go over the motions. One was to point it, place it at .5079, the second one was at .5121, and the third was at .5096, and none of them passed.
That is correct.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dennis. Let's go on to our next item, is our workshop, workshop discussion and updates regarding the COVID-19 virus in the current ordinance number 2818, declaration of local disaster. Chief Long?
All right, it's only 30 slides tonight, so we're doing good. All right, so just to continue on real quick, I'll run, run through the numbers, and we're still, we're still seeing positive results right now, and the numbers are still continuing to trend down. So Guadalupe County is still showing about 133 active cases. Of that, the county is still showing shirts at 61 active cases, so just a couple of number increase since our last meeting. Bear County still got a downward trend as well on the active cases, so it's down to 2348 now. Comal County's down to 441 active. So we'll look at the trend lines here, see some big drops from Houston, and Dallas is starting to get that trend going down as well. So I'll zoom in here on the next one, and just that kind of shows us compared to Comal County, so continuing on that downward trend that we like to see. We had a few, a few more deaths over the past week, so that's kind of brought our number up just a little bit. We stand at 72 deaths in Guadalupe County right now. And then our positivity rate, again, the top line there is the state of Texas has come down to 11.96, so Guadalupe County has come down to 10.4%. So we're just continuing to see that move in the right direction. Daily positivity rate, just to kind of show you from, just a little bit decrease again, I think it's a 2374 is what it's showing the current daily positivity rate is, so continuing to trend down. And the state hospitalizations, again, going down, so 5,000 went down last time to 4,200 this time. And then again, our hospitalizations, so we finally got back down below 400 on COVID hospitalizations, ICUs got below 200, and ventilators got below 100, and the patients that are on them. Hospitalization rates stayed pretty close to the same, not much difference there. And so we're just continuing to see all around some downward trends on the numbers, and so we just hope to continue to see that moving forward. That's all I've got.
Okay, council, questions? Councilmember Brown?
Chief Long, on your first slide up there, it said something along the line of Guadalupe County, 2,063 cases, 2,000 recovered, 133 active. Who does the math?
Yeah, so the state.
And again, throughout this whole briefing, we, we go from local to state, back to local, back to Bear County. It's like, who has the highest number? Let's put it on the slide.
Oh, no, I would, I would say that we're going to just what the state's reporting now, because the mechanism coming from the state to us is, is not consistent. So right now, the county is showing that we're at 280 active cases, but the state's showing us at 133 active cases, so...
Don't get me... I need to see these numbers like here, and...
Yeah, they, they're just, at this point, we're just going straight off of the dishes website with our numbers, because they update them every day, but that's just all we have to go by.
Thanks, again, sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be upset at you.
Councilmember Dalla?
So we have a big event coming up in a few weeks, National Night Out. Have we made any decisions yet as to what we're going to do about that?
Well, we, we continue to discuss it weekly in our meetings, and we're just, you know, withholding at this point. You know, I let the mayor talk more about that, but we're just kind of watching the numbers and kind of seeing what everything's looking like.
As you can see, the numbers are very confusing. It's on a, we look at these on a regular basis, and we, it just adds more confusion as to what exactly is going on.
I know, I, I see other sources well through the week.
Right, and, and that...
They are not even close matches.
No, and that's why our decisions are sometimes, we hesitate on which way we're going to go, is because we don't know the actual numbers. National Night Out is something that we have discussed, and right now, it's on hold. And it's, the main message I want to get across to our community is, as a city, we have to be consistent. If the bars are closed, then we should not be doing National Night Out. It sends the wrong message when we're not consistent, when we're asking these, these business owners to shut down, and then all of a sudden, the city does something different. It's just not the way to do business. So that's my, that's my biggest concern. We should be consistent in our message. Okay, any other questions, comments? No, thanks, chief. All right, we'll move on to Agenda item number 10. This is a month, monthly update on major projects and progress in capital improvement projects. This is an information packet that was provided, council available for public viewing. So we'll go on to requests and announcements. Any further announcements by City Manager, Dr. Brown? Okay. Council, any possible updates or information requested from staff? Yes, Councilmember Dalla?
Can we have, for our next meeting, some potential scenarios presented as to what it would look like if we adopt the no new tax rate, what kind of budget adjustments we have to make?
That would be part of the agenda next, on the next meeting, so we can provide that additional information.
So, am I being tasked to...
No, the budget's been approved. We've approved the budgets, there'd be no adjustments to the...
There's no adjustments, just to see what's, what's not going to be included in the budget if we go to the effective rate of...
But everything will be funded at the rate we've placed, because we've already approved the budget.
That's my point, that's, that's what I was trying to get.
Okay, yeah, all right. Got it, I'm okay.
There's no reason to do that, because you're fully funded the budget.
Right.
The tax rate isn't.
It's a tax rate.
I'm just trying to understand what you want me to...
It is a little confusing, but yeah, the budget's been passed, it's just the tax rate we have to work on, and, and the funding will, will have to be, find the wiggle room as it was stated earlier, where we're going to find, how we're going to wiggle.
Mayor, just a clarification, we, and maybe I'm wrong, my understanding was that we, well, we haven't, we, we can't give further direction until we choose the tax rate, but ultimately, we passed the budget, so it's fully funded.
Fully funded.
And we have the surplus from the previous year, which would be used to fund even the additional programs, the budget that we passed, plus the additional programs that Mr. Walters showed us tonight. So there wouldn't be any need for budgetary adjustments at this time, even if we adopted the effective rate, or failed to adopt any rate and defaulted to the effective.
It will be monitored, and it will come out of reserves unless we need to make adjustments for the next tax rate next year. Okay. All right, any possible items you'd like to place on future agenda items? Then, okay. Announcements by council members. Councilmember Davis?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Larson?
Nothing.
Councilmember Dalla?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Skagliola?
Not tonight.
Councilmember Hayward?
Yes, I, I attended the ACOG Economic Development Workshop. They'll be doing that over the next few weeks up until October. Normally, it's a one-day event, and because of COVID, they moved it to a one hour once a week until they could complete. I did the TML Town Hall and Building Dialogues webinar, and I attended the TML Retail Follows Rooftops webinar. And then Friday was the TML Region Seven Workshop that I attended, that I actually got to host as the president of Region Seven. as the president of Region Seven and I think it was an awesome event. We had small attendance. I would have expected more, but we did not, but I think those that attended probably got quite a bit out of it because we had Adrian Perez from the Economic Development Director and Maggie Titterton from the Chamber to do maximizing business responsive and employing economic development during COVID and I think they gave us a wealth of knowledge and I know they exceeded my thought process and went above and beyond. And then we had Jay Johnson from J2 Servant Leadership to talk about navigating turbances, doing the rising above and connecting and communicating and I think there was a lot of information to bring forth and learn from and I just really did get a lot out of that and I just think that, you know, maybe the next time we'll get more. That is all.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
Nothing.
Hey, I just want to say pass along my appreciation for councilmember Hayward. She did host the TML Region Seven Workshop. Excellent, excellent presentation. Great, great presentation. Appreciate it. The time is now 8:14. We stand adjourned.